Okay, good evening, welcome to Township of Lacey, Township meeting April twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public clause nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a sleuth through flag and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, second reading of ordinance two thousand and fifteen oh three authorizing to exceed municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA forty-eight four four five point one four.
Nor into Township Lacey County versus State of New Jersey authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon four dash forty-five point fourteen. Second reading.
Okay, being the second reading, I'll open the floor if there's anyone who'd like to speak. Jim?
Just any name and address. I have a couple of questions, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask questions on the budget at this point.
No, it's only on the cap bank ordinance.
Okay, strictly the cap.
Cap bank ordinance, yeah.
What is the amount of money that you're going to be exceeding the cap by, what percentage?
We're under cap. We're not, we're within our limits. You just established the bank that you can, it's like an insurance policy, to use for the future two years, next two years. So it's a good practice to do, if you don't do it, you don't have it, if, you know, so it's just like an insurance policy.
But what percentage of your overall budget is, like, one percent, two percent, three percent?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I know, normally.
Does the ordinance have a number in it?
Well, the ordinance is that we shall limit any increase in the said budget to one point five percent unless authorized by ordinance to increase it to three point five percent over the previous year's final appropriations.
Okay, so you're saying that one point five at this time, quote, to three point five.
This is, this is the bank for future years' budgets, not for the current budget.
No, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, but the normal is one point five unless you would do the ordinance to go to three point five.
Okay, so we're still within the cap for that?
Yes.
That's all, thank you.
Anyone else?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor? Any motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number two, second reading of ordinance two thousand and fifteen oh four amending chapter three twenty-three vehicles and traffic so as to establish no left turn at the driveway of the Forkett River Elementary School.
Nor into Township Lacey County versus State of New Jersey amending and supplementing chapter three twenty-three of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Vehicles and Traffic So As To Amend Section Three Twenty-three dash twenty-eight entitled Left Turn Prohibition to prohibit a left turn from the west driveway of the Forkett River Elementary School. This is, was requested via accidents that have been watched and monitored happening there at that furthest westerly driveway of the Forkett River School. It was requested of the Police Department via the County Engineering's Office via the School Board of Education.
Being the second reading, open to the floor if there's any public comment.
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number three, writ, second reading of ordinance two thousand and fourteen oh five, amending ordinance two thousand and fourteen oh three to correct, correct the technical defect.
Nor into Township Lacey County versus State of New Jersey amending ordinance two thousand and fourteen oh three providing for the preparation and execution of a complete program and revaluation of real property and authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars therefore authorized in and by the Township of Lacey. Again, this is just correcting a technical defect in the advertisement that had taken place with regards to this ordinance last year.
Being the second reading, open to the floor, if there's any public comment.
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor? Any motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number four, resolution two thousand and fifteen one twelve amending resolution two thousand and fourteen eighty-eight providing for special emergency appropriation.
Resolution Township Lacey County versus State of New Jersey amending resolution two thousand and fourteen eighty-eight providing for the financing of a special emergency appropriation of the Township of Lacey in the, in the County of Washington State of New Jersey by issuance of special emergency notes of the Township. This goes hand in hand with the prior ordinance, since we had the technical decap, defect with the ordinance, we also had to amend the resolution as per bond council.
Any motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number five, resolution two thousand and fifteen one thirteen authorizing reading of the budget by title.
A resolution Township Lacey County versus State of New Jersey authorizing the reading of the budget by title only tonight. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number six.
Okay, I'll go through the general appropriations for the two thousand and fifteen budget. General appropriations for municipal purposes is twenty-eight million, eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. The reserve for uncollected taxes is one million, one hundred thousand, four dollars. Total general appropriations is twenty-nine million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars, less the anticipated revenues of seventeen million, five hundred and one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. And the amount to be raised for taxes for support of this municipal budget is eleven million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Motion to open the floor?
Okay, anyone in the audience like to speak on the budget, this would be your opportunity. Jim?
Jim, Lacey Township. Review the budget, there's just a couple items I think need some clarification as to why we're talking about major shifts in funding. The surplus is up, I mean, it's always good to have a surplus, I'm not going to be wrong, but you went from three point six million to four point two anticipated surplus, and when you go through the rest of the budget, you see some major cuts. One of the major cuts that jumps out is under the Police Department for other expenses, where last year was over four hundred thousand, you went down to three hundred thousand. And I support cutting, but when you talk about twenty-five percent cut of an O and E budget, I'd like to know why such a drastic cut? Was there something that they spent last year that would not be appropriate to purchase this year? We're talking twenty-five percent of operation expenses.
Yeah, then I know we took the cars out and put them into capital.
It's strictly the capital items.
Yeah, yeah, we just, we moved it out to the capital budget versus the.
Right, so it's the vehicles.
The vehicles itself, yeah.
So you're buying SUVs and not patrol cars?
We're buying the Ford Explorers we were buying in the past.
Other than that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the other ones that jumped out, and you know, it's always been that people made, being a former member of the Underwood Rescue Recovery, where last year was twelve thousand, you cut them down to at least seventy-five hundred this year.
Yep, that was a one shot that they had requested last year, but they, all the years prior to that were the same budget amount that we're putting in this year.
Like I said, I'm just looking for clarification, because it is, you know, again, I noticed this year, we received ninety thousand dollars anticipated for two thousand and fifteen through schools for garbage collection, but last year there was no funding from these schools, and I was under your presence at the schools, going back when we had the cooperative purchasing programs and joint services. Have they been paying or have they not been paying for garbage collection?
No, the schools have, have never paid for garbage collection, it's something that the municipality has always, you know, picked up, but we met with them, I guess it was a year or two back, and we, we told them we rebid our contract, which we did last year, we're going to be bidding the schools as separate entity altogether, that we couldn't afford to carry it any longer on this side of the fence, and that was the discussions we had, and that's why it was put in that way, so.
Right, so, because I recall back when I was on it, we discussed with shared service where they were going to use the municipality but pay the cost to save them after contractors, so it's new to me that they have never paid or haven't paid a decent decade.
Yeah, yes, and that's why we bid it out separately, so that we would know exactly what their cost was and the tipping fees, the, the garbage haul actually uses separate trucks for that specific purpose.
And I know we, previously we talked about the deferred payment to the schools, that's okay in the budget, the money is appropriated, but at a delayed payment, or are they going to stay on the regular payment schedule?
We met with the schools recently, and, and, you know, we, the agreement that apparently existed between Mr. Savage and Mr. Fanning, our former CFO, was something that the committee was not aware of for the most part, and Ms. Cabello's been instructed, and she was at the meeting, that, you know, come up with a plan on what the dates are and the checks will be delivered.
Can someone explain under animal control service, what we're getting for eighty-three thousand dollars a year?
You're getting shelter coverage from the Ocean County Animal Facility Shelter, emergency vet visits and local vet visits, plus the, the calls for service.
Does this also include the free vaccinations and everything that we run?
No, that's separate and distinct, that's always been separate and distinct, and that was nothing that was covered by the prior animal control either.
Have we gone out to bid in recent years for animal, I know years.
We go out for RFPs every year.
Yeah.
Yes, but that's through the Board of Health.
The Humane Society's not competitive for that?
The Humane Society will not address most of the calls that our current animal control officer will address.
And here's a large increase under Operation on Classified Accumulated Leap Compensation Salaries and Wages. Last year it was appropriated three hundred and fifty thousand, actual spending was three hundred and forty-eight thousand. This year you're anticipating four hundred and sixty-two thousand, why such a large increase?
Some of last year's payout wasn't appropriated.
I'm looking at the expended two thousand and fourteen, there's still a balance of thirteen hundred and seven dollars.
There was more payout against a reserve budget, so if you take the two that should have been in last year's budget, be.
So then, on this year's budget worksheet for paying charge for last year, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six twenty-two, is it incorrect?
That's only against the two thousand and fourteen appropriation, that's correct, but it's only against two thousand and fourteen, we had to use some of two thousand and thirteen's reserve budget to pay for it. So you're going, that's going to show up on my appropriation reserves, on the balance sheet, not on the budget.
So it's not on here?
Right, so I combined it and came up with the appropriate total.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else? Tony? Just any name and address, Tony.
Tony Manger, dugout drive. Do we finally come up with a number on the tax assessment?
The appeals.
The, I guess, other? Last year the budget was forty-one, we spent forty-seven, we threw fifty?
Yeah, we put fifty in the budget this year for tax appeals. Last year, I think, was it forty-seven last year?
Forty-seven, now why do we put in fifty if we're having less tax appeals?
We are having less tax appeals, as of today, the number is down, you know, from last year, and as a matter of fact, I think it's two hundred and seventy appeals have come in, and we have, I think, a hundred of them belong to Toll Brothers strictly for vacant land.
But in addition to that, I still have some commercial properties pending before state tax court that we.
We had that last year too.
Yes, and that, and that rolls, so that we're planning on having some of them on the docket this year to get them settled, so we may see additional legal fees.
We had the money in last year too for that, we spent, we put in forty-one thousand, we had four hundred and seventy appeals, he spent forty-seven thousand for four hundred and seventy appeals.
Right.
Now you're saying we have two hundred and seventy, about half?
Yeah, last, last year's.
And we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars, doesn't make one bit of sense.
Yeah.
No, one bit of sense. I don't care if there's stuff leaning over, there was stuff leaning over last year too.
Tony, we're not necessarily going to spend fifty thousand, the money is being put in there, if it's needed, it's going to be in there, if not, it's going to drop back in next year. But the money that we spent last year, the majority of that money went towards the tax appeal that we're fighting with Exelon, which has now been resolved, and we're just closing up the loopholes on the file paperwork.
So they're saying more money that we're putting into their garrison for no reason?
Yeah.
I don't see any reason to put the money there.
It doesn't need to be spent if we don't spend it.
We hope we don't need it, Tony, but we don't know.
See, you know what it is, you know what's funny about budget? The first numbers that come to you, it's not really a budget, it's a wish list, and that's what the wish list is, I mean, we gave him forty-one thousand, we gave the department forty-one thousand, he spent forty-seven, and now we're going to give him fifty. It doesn't make one bit of sense, it really doesn't.
You don't get to spend that, it really has to go through.
No, I know what you're saying, I went down and spoke to him after you and I spoke at, not last meeting, I was away, the meeting prior to that, and he told me that he resolved ninety percent of the tax appeals in-house without going to court. The, the reason that we have to take and certainly fund that deadline item is because we have to have money available, we have to have an attorney available when we do go to tax court.
I understand, but not to two hundred and fifty thousand.
No, but the majority.
And we did four hundred and seventy last year.
Right, majority of that money, Tony, goes towards state court when we get to state tax court, and we have to do appraisals and all the other things to come along, we're trying to spend those cases.
We spent three hundred and sixty thousand, we, we just spent three hundred and sixty thousand, I don't see us spending another fifty thousand, and I understand we're not going to spend it, it's there, believe me, it'll get spent, just like the forty-one thousand got spent to forty-seven thousand, because we just ran the law. I don't see any reason to put that in the budget, give a fifty thousand dollars, it's just totally ridiculous.
Thanks, Tony.
I'm awake, that's just, you don't care.
Can I just load it up, can you get that?
No.
Thank you, Jim.
Regina Descends of Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach as Jane Q. Citizen. I'm very surprised that while sitting here listening to a vote on raising taxes, knowing the hardship it will cause to so many people, there are still people rebuilding from Superstorm Sandy, there are people still recovering from the Great Recession. People should not have to decide between food, medicine, and taxes. There are many people in this town, one paycheck from being homeless, just look around at all the foreclosures for this town. There are people that are still unemployed, homebound, elderly on fixed incomes, and those working three jobs just to put food on the table. Doesn't anyone think about all these people who can barely pay their bills? I respectfully, you know, say that raising taxes again is not the answer.
Thanks, Gina. Anyone else? Jack?
Good evening, Jack Martnak, two seventeen, AMUA. Here in my capacity as a private citizen, no longer on the school board, it was a great run, I'm happy to be off, I don't envy any of you. More of the school board members come budget time, I know what a challenge it is, but there's been a lot of talk in town about the holes, deferral of school taxes and late payments, and it came up, I guess, two meetings ago, and Ms. Lorrain, you pointed out correctly, there's not a direct connection between deferring school taxes and making the payments to the school the following year. But I did want to try to explain it in layman's terms, because I've had a couple people ask me since I was on the board for nine years, how this works, what it's about, what's the connection, and so, as simply as I can, I'm going to use some pretty basic terms, I don't want to get into accounting terms, I'm going to use terms like piggyback. But what happens is the township runs on a budget year that runs from January one to December thirty-first, and the school district runs on a budget year that runs from July one to June thirty, so that the school district budget year is aligned with the school year. So what happens in a township is the township collects taxes for all the governing bodies, the county, the school board, the township, and it holds those taxes in trust. So in the case of the school district, the township holds the taxes that it collects during the first six months of the year in trust, and then on July one, when the school budget year starts, it disperses them over the course of the year. So in theory, if everything's perfect, and everybody pays their taxes on time, and I know they don't, at July one, there should be roughly twenty million dollars in trust, in the piggybank, that then the township would start paying out. Now, what the township can do, authorized under law, is it can vote to defer school taxes. What it can say is, there's a big pile of money in that piggybank, we're going to take some of that money and use it in this year's budget, because the school district doesn't need all of it during our township's budget year, and we're going to use that as revenue in our current budget. And I think two meetings ago, you voted to defer, I think it was either eight hundred or nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred.
So what happens is that shows up in the books as eight hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue, that the township can use in its budget. So it takes that money, uses it, expends it, and puts an IOU in the piggybank. It's all legal, the township committee does it by passing a resolution, the school board doesn't have to approve of it, the school board can't disapprove of it, the school board isn't even consulted on it. And it's a pretty common practice, it's not unique to Lacey, that's for sure, in New Jersey, and it's not a problem most of the time. It only becomes a problem if over time, that piggybank has been tapped out, that year after year, school tax deferrals have been run up, and in Lacey, it's been those kind of numbers, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, a million or more, if not every year, pretty frequently, at least a good chunk of the time that I was on the board. Like I said, it doesn't matter as long as the board eventually gets its money. But what's happened in Lacey, as I understand it, is that that piggybank has had so many IOUs put in, that come July one, it's been difficult for the township to find the first three point five million dollars that it owes the school district for the first payment, and it's essentially waiting for the August taxes to come in, so it can make that payment. Now, it's, it happens several times, and I know Mr. Savage and, and Mr. Fanning discussed it, and I know when I was on the board, there was really nothing the school board could do, I mean, basically, Mr. Fanning would call up and say, we don't have your money, we'll get it to you in two weeks. Short of doing something like filing a suit, in which case we're all just paying the lawyers to fight it out, there's not much that the school district can do. So it's not really a problem, as long as it's paid on time. But what I find rather ironic is that at the December, at the March twenty-sixth meeting, I don't, I don't watch the meetings anymore, I watch school board meetings, I'm happy to be a private citizen, but at the first part of the meeting, on March twenty-sixth, the township voted to defer another, I forget whether it's eight hundred or nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars in taxes. And not twenty minutes later, and I have the transcript here, somebody actually sent me a transcript of the meeting, because I said I don't watch it, not twenty minutes later, the school board was being chastised for raising taxes in the way it manages its money. I'm sitting here thinking, gee, if the school board, and I was on the board last year, we raised taxes, if we didn't raise taxes, the township wouldn't have that nine hundred thousand dollars coming in during this year's collections to put in your budget to balance your budget. You'd be nine hundred thousand dollars in the hole, and that's about a, about a six percent of your tax levy, roughly, now you would have to raise taxes just to be even before you start taking all the expenses of buying police cars or, or paying higher health insurance, that kind of thing. So I think it's really, and I'm using the word ironic to be nice, but I think it's really ironic that the school board, and I'm not on it anymore, but what was done the last few years, I'll take ownership for, I was there, is being criticized for its financial management, when at the same time, the township is, is struggling and piggybacking the school board's tax increases, essentially. And, and that's, that's a lot that I care about in terms of the irony, but I'm also worried, now that I'm a private citizen, taxpayer homeowner, what worries me is that if the school board has a zero tax increase, and we, the school board does that once in a while, we did it in two thousand and ten when I was on, we did it in two thousand and eleven, there would be no extra revenue next year to defer, and this township would be looking to plug that nine hundred thousand dollar gap. Again, that's like a five percent, five or six percent increase in the tax levy right off the bat. And even worse, if the school boards cut taxes, and the school board, the school district in Lacey has several times, since it's been a K through twelve district, there's been several years where they cut the school tax, they did it in two thousand and eight while I was on the board. If the board were to do that now, and cut school taxes five percent, not only would you not be able to defer nine, another nine hundred thousand, the following spring, you'd have to make up that money, two point two million dollars, you're shaking your head, thank you for confirming my math, Ms. Lorrain, the, you'd have to make up that two point two million dollars, because you'd have less money coming in for school taxes. The township would be in the hole for three million dollars in its budget on a thirteen million dollar tax levy. You'd be looking at like a twenty-five percent increase in your tax levy, just to break even, before you even start looking at what other expenses you have, and we all know expenses go up, and we saw it at the school board. So to me, there's, there, it's no surprise that Standard and Poor's looked at what's happening with the payments to the school board, and what's happening in this township, and is concerned about the school board's ability to get its payments on time from the township. And that, I think, plays heavily into why they lowered the bond rating for the school district. I think the problems here, and there have been problems here for years, are creating problems now for the school district. And, and what shows me that's true is in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, when there was a zero increase at the school board, the following year, there was no new money to defer taxes, so what happened in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve? That was the year we had furloughs, that was the year we had a budget crisis, they were, you know, the, I remember the rescue squad and the fire departments coming up begging for money for new, new air tanks and air packs, and, I mean, those were horrible years, and it's no coincidence that those were the same years that followed the two years that the, the school board held its tax increase to zero. Those were actually also two of the years, more than two, that the township was not able to pay its tax levy to the school board on time. And I know some of you are new here, and you didn't have anything to do with what happened back then, but it's a subject I think you really need to look into, the township has become addicted to living on school tax increases, and if there's not a school tax increase, which we're all hoping for, I think the township's really going to be hurt. Thank you.
Jack, let me just say a couple things. First of all, with regards to the, the March meeting which you're referring to, the issue was brought up, this township governing body, because of, you know, people approaching us on it, but more so comments that were made at, at the school board, which I understand you weren't there at that point in time, taking and saying that the Standard and Poor's reduction was really something that was based on this town, not passing on the checks on the timely manner. We did go back, we spoke to Adrian, we found out that Adrian and Jim did work very well together, they had a good working relationship over the years, that, that Adrian was our CFO, and Jim has been yours for many, many years over there, probably twenty-five years plus. And, and that was something that we were concerned about, so we, we got our records, we pulled everything out, and there's three times throughout the last five years, I believe, where the checks were not there exactly on the date that they were supposed to be, but within the month that they were supposed to be, that they were there. We met with the school board because it was a concern of ours, and we're happy to see that we got a meeting with the school board this year, and we asked that question, was, was there any warning signs given by Standard and Poor's, which is a normal way of practice for Standard and Poor's when they're going to be reducing somebody's credit rating? And we were told, no. We're not sure that that's the case, based on the professionals that we retained that they told us that there should be. We have sent a letter to Standard and Poor's because we want to know what's going on. We, we represent the taxpayers just as the school board represents the taxpayers, and we want to get the answers, so we know what's going on. As far as not having tax increases over those years, we don't know what, what was done to the school board, because we didn't always have, we weren't privy to the information, to the, you know, budget information like we were early on ten, twelve years ago. We do know that the bud, the solar project, you overfunded that by seven or eight million dollars. That's seven or eight million dollars, we believe, was utilized in budgets to take and minimize the tax increase to the taxpayers, so you can't stand there and say that, well, we didn't raise the taxes, you know, because we're, we're doing such great financial planning at the school level. There's underlying reasons for that, we're still awaiting answers for the, for the solar project itself, which we haven't gotten, I know Mrs. Vechenza's been working on that diligently, trying to get answers, so, you know, coming in here, we're certainly welcome as Joe Citizen, we welcome you anytime, we'd love to see you come to more of our meetings, but the reality is that, you know, right now, there's a lot of unknown questions at the school level, if you want to come in here and ask questions and we get you the answers, I'd be happy to do it for you. But there's a lot of unknown issues over there, which we're going to have to try and find out, why that credit rating was reduced the way it was. I understand Mrs. Brower and Mr. Savage have every intention of going up and trying to sit down and talk to Standard and Poor's, hopefully some, some of you who are existing board members, you know, will go with them, and you'll try and get some answers for the taxpayers.
Yeah, it's a subject, the, you know, as far as Jim Savage and Mr. Fanning, they did talk, I, I can't say that Jim Savage was ever happy about it, but the position I can't say that Jim Savage was ever happy about it, but the position Jim was in is Mr. Fanning would say, hey, I don't have the money, I'll get it for you next week. It's not a lot, it's not like Jim said, yeah, I don't need your money. I mean, there wasn't a lot he could do. With regard to the excess bonding, I think we've explained that, I explained it at least three or four times on the board with charts and graphs, I understand they went over it again. You know, that eight million that we didn't need because the bids came in low, that did go back to the taxpayer. That did help have a zero tax increase.
Sure.
That money went to pay debt service instead of taxpayers.
I understand that, but if that eight million dollars wasn't there, the tax increase during those calendar years would have been substantially different, which is what you're appointing us.
Well, no, my point isn't the school board's doing a great job, that's not my point. My point is the township is living off of the money that it can appropriate every year through the tax deferral. And that, when that runs dry, there's trouble, and we saw it once already in 2010, 2011. No matter why it ran dry, no matter why the school board couldn't, didn't raise taxes, whether it was because we were great fiscal managers or, hey, we got lucky, and I haven't been to anybody, we got lucky that we went out for bid in the bottom of recession and the bids came in way under price, all right? So we got lucky, I'm not saying we were great. But if the school board, here's what's going to happen, if, let's say the state decides it's going to follow the state funding formula, right, there's starting to be lawsuits on that. If next year the state says, Lacey Township, we're going to give you another two or three million dollars, the school board isn't going to raise the tax rate, it may even cut the tax rate, and this body and the people that depend on the police and the first aid squad and everybody else are going to be screwed. So I think it's a real problem to be living off that tax deferral year after year after year, and apparently it's been $20 million worth over the last, I don't know how many years since they passed that law. So that's my concern is with regard to the township's budget, that it's living off of borrowing money from the school district tax levy every year.
The same as the schools did, living off of the eight million dollars and keeping a zero budget for those years.
Yeah, but that didn't set us up for not being able to pay our bills. I was on the board nine years, we always paid our bills, even if we got our money late from the township.
Yeah.
So, I just have one question, I mean, we could go on all night.
You could go back and forth on this issue, you know, for weeks, but let me just say one thing, because you're referring back to 2010, 2011. Those were probably the worst economic times in the history of this country, when the entire country failed. And those, that was, I believe it was 2011 when your budget went down, when the voters still had an opportunity to vote on your budget. The budget went down, you folks came in here and sat in the audience with us, and I think the only thing we did, 2010? The only thing we did at that point in time, based on the, you, the board members asking us to take and do exactly what you asked us to do, was ask the union to freeze their salaries for one year at zero percent interest, zero percent raise, which came from you, not from us, and if that was okay, we told them we were going to sign off on the budget. We did exactly that, your staff agreed to it based on your request, we signed off on the budget. That, those were very, very different economic times in 2010, 11, which you really can't refer to in a normal year. If you want to go back even further, you're talking about $20 million over the course of, you know, whatever the number of years you're referring to. We went back and we double-checked what the number was that we donated to the schools. Donated, not asked for a dollar back since the power plant was built, and the total is $30 million.
Yeah.
So had we not had been gracious enough over all those years to take and put forth that money to the schools because we wanted to build a good school system for the taxpayers in this township.
Yeah, and Township Committee of 1980s and 1990s did that, and I'm grateful as a resident, a homeowner, and someone who sent my kid through the Lacey Township School District. But that's old history too, I mean, we're dealing year to year in the budget reality that we're in.
Right.
And my concern is with the budget being relying on taking money off of the top of the school tax levy to balance the township.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty dangerous, that's all I'm saying.
I think that you're extremely optimistic, I certainly wish you the best, I'll say a prayer for you, but I don't believe you'll see an additional $2 million in school aid coming down the pipe anywhere in the next 10 years.
Well, I'm not on the school board anymore, so I don't have to take it, but as a taxpayer in Lacey, you know.
We'd all love to see it.
I said the same thing, or actually, Mr. Startup, who was in this business for 36 years when I got on the board, told me, you're never going to see the state fund.
Never happened.
And then, but it did, two years later, and it was the same kind of thing. There were some lawsuits, there were some political pressure, who knows what happens when Christie's gone. I'm not banking on it, I vote for the state to save, and all the taxpayers save, it happens. But, you know, it's just back to the point though, that it's an at-risk way to run a township, to run a budget, to be relying on that source of money every year, when we've seen historically, it's not available. So, I just have one last question, and then I'll sit down and let someone else speak.
Sure.
I understand it was mentioned that last year, the township paid the school its tax levy payouts on time? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe there's two checks that weren't given on time.
Last year?
Yeah, based on the numbers Mr. Fanning provided to the sheen.
Okay, so it wasn't, because I think that was stated at the March 26 meeting, that last year, the school taxes were paid on time, so they weren't.
I'd have to pull, I don't have the sheet with me tonight, but if you want, I can, you'll get it out and show it.
Okay, because I didn't think that was accurate, but I did want to at least bring that up, that they weren't paid on time. And the second half of that is in order to make those payments, did the township have to take a loan?
No.
Did it have to take a loan to make other payments so it would have the money to pay?
No, the relationship, the relationship Adrian had with Jim was really taking and offsetting it so that we wouldn't have to go out and borrow money and put the burden of the interest on taxpayers. Linda, we didn't borrow last year, did we?
We had TANs last year.
Yeah.
Oh, we did last year.
That was the first year we did.
Yes.
Okay, so last year, you borrowed money to pay the school on time, but there were still two payments you didn't make on time.
I have to check those numbers, I just said to you.
Before we borrowed the money, I believe, we, I, we didn't borrow the money until, I think, the end of July or so, and I think we were late with the June and July payment, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Adrian gave us the breakdown of all the checks and everything.
So, I mean, that just worries me more. I never knew that when I was on the board, that you were borrowing money to pay the school district, the money that in theory you collect and stockpile for six months. And that's just one more thing that as a taxpayer makes me think, what the heck's going on? We run down the surplus, or we run down the money that's in trust, and now you're borrowing money.
See, what happens is in years past, prior to Christie changing, when the state aid monies would go out or energy tax receipts monies, we would get that earlier in the year. So until we strike a tax rate and get our budget, and the county strikes and the school strikes, and we can put out the bills, we have no money coming in, those are lean months in June and July. We used to get a portion of our energy tax receipts by that point, we're not getting them until late August, early September now.
Oh, I understand the school board was in the same boat.
It pushes all of that back, so we now have to, what we call tax anticipation notes, to float us through those lean months.
But it just kind of drives home the point, if the township wasn't deferring school taxes and using them in their current operating year budget, that money would be there in the proverbial piggy bank to make the payments on time. So you're spending all that money and you're borrowing even more to pay the schools on time. I just think that's bad juju, that's all.
The reality is, you didn't get the information from your business administrator any more than we knew that the two of them had a deal, that they were working together, trying to help each other, trying to help each other as well as the taxpayers, so.
He used to tell me, the years that I was president or finance committee chairman at least, he would tell me, hey, Adrian called, the money's going to be two weeks late. And it was never a problem for the school district because Jim would always manage the money and we never had to borrow money to get by. And it was really not an issue until the bond rating thing came out, and that's what, that's what made it all of a sudden an issue.
Well, we hope to get some answers from Standard and Poor's ourselves, so we know what's going on.
Yeah, again, I don't think the bond rating is a big problem. I don't foresee the school going out bonding to buy another school or something, doing anything in the near future. My concern is what's going on in the township budget and how, what I see is very precarious. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jack. Anyone else?
Motion to close the floor.
You have a motion to close the floor?
Move it.
Motion to close the floor.
One in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to adopt.
I agree with the resolution again, it's a resolution, Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the adoption of the local municipal budget of the Township of Lacey for the fiscal year 2015. And as repeated earlier, again, general appropriations for municipal purposes, $28,018,141. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $1,104,000. Total general appropriations, $29,118,145, less the anticipated revenues of $17,501,310. And the amount to be raised by taxes for the support of the municipal budget is $11,616,835. Motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2015-115, requesting approval for dedication by Ryder for the Employee Dental Self-Insurance Fund.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, requesting approval of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to establish a dedication by Ryder for the Employee Dental Benefits Self-Insurance Fund.
May I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number nine, Resolution 2015-116, reappointing the township's tax assessor.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, appointing Mark Fitzpatrick as a tax assessor in accordance with state statute.
May I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number 10, Resolution 2015-117, authorizing appointment of a part-time police dispatcher.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Christopher Bruno as a part-time public safety telecommunicator trainee for the Township of Lacey Police Department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number 11, Resolution 2015-118, authorizing the appointment of seasonal employees for the Recreation Department.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of seasonal employees for the Recreation Department. This is right now just to cover the opening of the skate park. It's two individuals that we're hiring for those hours that the skate park will be open.
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number 12, Resolution 2015-119, appointing members to the Veterans Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, appointing members to the Veterans Commission, and the new appointee is Bill Moss.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, grab those and bill, thank you. Item number 13, Resolution 2015-120, appointing members to Municipal Alliance Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, appointing members to the Municipal Alliance Committee of Township of Lacey. That's Patricia DeSabato, Ann Moyer, and Rosa Stites.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number 14, Resolution 2015-121, authorizing receipt of bids of the bulkhead project replacement at various locations.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing receipt of bids for bulkhead replacement at various locations. This will be Yacht Place in Plaza South, Spoonville Court, Abbotross Court, alternate sites of Waikiki Drive, Hawa'hu Drive, and Hilo Bay Drive.
May I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number 15, Resolution 2015-122, authorizing release of performance bond municipal building HVAC upgrades.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing release of performance guarantee for Peterson Service Company Incorporated for the HVAC control system upgrade for the Lacey Township municipal building. They are on a two-year maintenance bond.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number 16, Resolution 2015-123, authorizing the release of deposit monies.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number 17, Resolution 2015-124, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $6,272,324.26.
May I motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number 18, Motion to approve township meeting minutes of April 9, 2015.
Move it. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item number 19, Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of April 9, 2015.
Move it. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item number 20, Motion to approve budget meeting minutes of March 5, 2015.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item number 21, Motion to approve budget meeting minutes of March 19, 2015.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Do you have an add-on?
Yes, it's Resolution 125, it's a resolution of Township Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Brittany Schroder as a full-time public safety telecommunicator for the Township of Lacey. We, Brittany has been working for us over the past year as a part-timer. We have lost one of our dispatchers due to, she is taking employment elsewhere, so we need to fill that vacancy.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
That's all I have to add on this evening.
Comments on the committee, do you?
Yes, Mayor. There's been some talk tonight about the budget. I know that people in the public, some of the people sitting here right now have experience in different budget, public and private industry. I have experience in government with regard to the budget. I've done budgets for years for the county. Budgets aren't easy things, there's a lot of competing interests. People do come up to the microphone, there are necessities, and everyone thinks that they have a necessity. If we had our druthers, we would try to satisfy, we do make every attempt. And we have spirited debate in our back room there during different sessions and different meetings wherein we try to come to a consensus. So I just want everyone to know that every effort is made. It's, there is a finite amount of dollars, and, you know, where I think a lot of us come out in it is advocacy for the taxpayer. We're all taxpayers, and a lot of us work in this town as well, or in this county. So I just want to give everyone my personal assurance that, I know I was part of these discussions. We do have debate among us, and we do take every line item in this budget very seriously. And our professionals take it seriously, our employees take this very seriously. So this is something that definitely is not at all taken lightly. And I could tell you that factually, the budget is down this year over the last, I think some $240,000.
Correct.
Mayor? So, we're being frugal, we are certainly being professional and acting in the best way we can for the taxpayer and our employees from year to year. It's, you know, with the cap, it is very difficult. But I'm proud of the work that we've done here, and I do think we've taken in a lot of competing views and we've given what we can to each and every department. So transitioning from there, essentially a public service announcement. You know, at Captain's Inn, in the month of June, the staff over there is going to be undergoing something that we call TIPS at the County Health Department. What it really is, is RBST, Responsible Beverage Server Training. And it's something that's close to me because of what I do with specific regard to road safety, DUI prevention, things like that. So, I mean, this is an evidence-based program, I applaud them over there at the Captain's Inn. I hope that all of our liquor licensees in town engage and get Responsible Beverage Server Training. It's a certified, evidence-based program, and it is available. And, you know, what it essentially does is helps ensure that there's safe service of alcoholic beverage. And I think it's some, since we all are on the roads, I think this is a good program. And one of the take-home points is that there will be, I can tell you with certainty, as I understand it, the licensees that send their employees through this training, they'll see a reduction in their liability insurance. So I think it's a win-win for everybody involved, the business owners, the pedestrians, the motorists, and certainly the people being served as well. And I'll end, Mayor, this evening. Again, it was an honor to be there last year, members of the government, last week with members of the governing body at our park with the opening of girls softball. I think the young ladies did a great job, I want to thank our Public Works Department and our Rec Director for preparing those fields. It did rain several days in a row before that, and, I mean, everybody was excited. It was a really beautiful day, it was a wonderful time. And, again, something that you don't take lightly, and be with you forever in the memory bank. So I want to thank everyone, the parents and the athletes involved with our young ladies and their softball. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Bill Moss, well deserved. We, I look forward to working with you, with Mr. Curatolo too with that. We had the opening day of Lacey Little League, a lot of the, Mr. Curatolo and myself were there. It was very touching, I don't know if anybody here was there. It touched me quite because of the Stevens family, I, it really got to me because we threw out the first pitch with his son, and it, I know what the family's going through and what we need to do to really help them. And as a governing body, we look forward to helping anybody in the town as well as they need. They need a lot of encouragement because they're going through some bad times. But other than that, the Little League was great, we had a good time, we threw out the pitches, the whole day was great. Same thing as I touched on with Pete, said with Lacey Girl Softball too. We looked forward to going there, it was a great turnout, they really appreciated everything that we did for them, meaning Public Works, they got everything ready in the fields as they did in Lacey Little League. As everybody knows here, we have the best there is when it comes to parks in this town. As everybody knows here, we have the best there is when it comes to parks in this town. I always commend Lacy, Casey Parker, and the DPW, and I want to do that again, because they do a great job in everything that they do, and that's about all I have today, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Rec Director, Jim Wellen, wanted me to announce the youth yoga program, which is going to be at the Lacy Middle School, which is for seventh and eighth graders, for a free six-week after-school yoga program on the following Thursdays, April 30th, May 7th, 14th, 21, 28th, and June 4th. The program begins at 2:10 PM and ends at 3 PM, and there will be late bus dismissal at 3:15. Students should bring a yoga mat or beach towel and wear comfortable clothes and bring water. This was sponsored by the Lacy Municipal Police Foundation, which was a, which is a nonprofit organization formed by Chief Paprata. That's all I have.
Thank you.
No comments in here, thank you, Mayor.
No comments. Just briefly, talking with the guys, talking about baseball opening day, I apologize, I